Good evening. I'd like to call the board meeting for Wednesday, November 6, 2013, to order.
Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Schleter?
Sure.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
And I'm here.
Thank you.
Has the meeting been properly posted this date?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per board policy, up to 15 minutes of resident comment is permitted. If you'd like to make a comment, we ask that you come to the microphones, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes so that enough people will have time to speak. Would anyone like to make a comment? Okay, please come up to the microphones. Hi.
Thank you. My name is David Fowler. I'm at 7549 Riverview and a proud father of a Franklin graduate who's now doing great in her second year at University of Wisconsin. I'm here to speak on the item about the health care. I think it's critical to the city of Franklin as a whole and to the school that our school system is a well-run, well-respected education facility around the southeast Wisconsin. It's one way our city's going to grow. I know there's a lot of concern about property tax stabilization, about taxes. If we don't grow as a community, we will not see that stabilization of our property tax. Our school district in particular, being the one that's in the middle of the city with few businesses and commercial development, we can't see us not growing to continue to finance our school system. The savings I think we're going to get with this change, I don't think are worth the upset or the disruption to some of the staff. We just got through with the renovation of the high school, which I have supported for a long time. I think we need to keep our high-quality staff. We need to keep their morale up. I don't have any scientific data to show that morale would go down, but I think they've had 13 new initiatives in the last two years that the school board and others have and the school administration have asked them to take on. We've increased their class sizes. And with those kinds of changes, the change is always an upset to staff. And if this change is only going to save $250,000, and if the consultant that you hired has already said that she doesn't think it's worth making this change, I just don't think we can lump so many changes on top of our staff and not expect them to continue with the high quality they have. We've got a, we're getting a brand-new high school, the flagship of our education system here in Franklin. I would hate to see the staff get disrupted with changes that are going to save some money because I've got to remind the board and I remind myself all the time, saving money is a great thing, but the objective of the school system is to educate children. Saving money should be a secondary or a third objective, not the first objective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. [applause]
A little intimidating.
Hi.
Hello. I forget I've got a big mouth, anyway. My name's Barb Gallagher. My address is 7860 Stonewood Drive. I'm a 33-year taxpayer in Franklin, and yes, I am proud to say I'm a 21-year employee in good standing of Franklin Public Schools. Tonight, however, I am speaking to you as a taxpayer first and foremost. I've seen a lot of different Franklin school boards with many different members in my 33 years as a resident. Each one of those boards has had to make changes in school policies, cuts in the budget, but I've got to tell you, never in all of those years have I ever witnessed a group of board members that works against the recommendations of their administration and the best welfare of their staff as this board has. It appears that some of you have made it your personal mission to bash educators by using the powers given to you as a school board. You've chosen to disregard your own administrative team's recommendations regarding insurance benefits. At the last board meeting, administrators strongly stated that there is no need to raise the out-of-pocket costs in the health insurance plan because the district has already saved over $1 million by changing to Humana from WEA Trust. Furthermore, between this year and the past two years, the district has saved $3 million in contributions to WRS retirement benefits. Another $1 million is saved due to senior teachers retiring and the hiring of new and younger teachers who are at or near the bottom of the pay scales. And you have saved another $1 million due to the increased amount that employees now pay toward their insurance premiums. If I'm doing the math right, that adds up to $6 million savings over the past two years. Still, you continue on in your determination to increase the financial hardships on your dedicated staff by increasing their out-of-pocket costs for the benefits that they earn every single day by working hard to educate your children and to give all children the very best opportunities for a successful life as adults. Now, the ironic thing for me is that I've never even taken the insurance benefits from the district, even though for many years I was eligible to do so. So for me personally, this issue currently does not directly affect me, though it certainly might in the future. So you might wonder why I'm even bothering to speak to you tonight. Well, there are several reasons. I have to wonder what other actions you will take with regards to employee rights and practices. Will you cut my hours just because you can? Will you cut paid holidays because you can? What other benefits will you cut simply because you can? I have to be concerned about these things. I'm also here because I see the stress and destruction that your cuts have caused in my coworkers' lives over the last few years. And frankly, I'm upset with this board for the disregard of the impact on staff and the district's ability to retain and recruit quality staff by making decisions just because you can, not because it is what is best for our students and education. In closing, I would ask, beg, and demand each one of you to take your eyes off of your spreadsheets for a while and get into the classrooms to witness the amazing learning going on every single day, provided by an exceptional staff of dedicated educators. Sorry. Menopausal hormones out of control.[473.22][473.22][laughter] But I am passionate about this. Please take time to think about how your actions directly affect our lives and our families' lives. Rekindle the compassion for your fellow man that surely all of you possess deep in your hearts, and then take another look at the actions you plan to take tonight and in the future. Please reconsider the district's recommendations on this issue. At the very least, you owe that to the taxpayers like me who put you in your seat on this board. Thank you.
[applause]
I'm Marguerite Dargwitz. I teach at, in the Franklin School System, and I would like to reiterate what Barb said, that the teacher stress level in this district has probably quadrupled to the point where a lot of them are near the breaking point. Also, a number of you have stated verbatim that you would not do anything to the teachers just because you could. And now that the administration and the insurance company said, "You don't have to do this, you're still doing it because you can," that's too bad for us, and it doesn't say much for you guys. Please reconsider.
[applause]
Good evening. My name is Paula Dreier. I teach at the high school. I'm a Nonne Falls resident, but I ask permission to speak. My comments will be brief and to the point. I rearranged some parent-teacher conferences of my own to be here tonight for my own children. Franklin Public Schools has the reputation for hiring and retaining quality educators, many of whom have been recognized both at the state level and nationally. As you consider making changes to our current health insurance plan, please keep in mind that we are a financially strong district, and as a board, it is your responsibility to the Franklin community to do whatever it takes to continue to employ the best and the brightest so that they don't seek employment elsewhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you. [applause] Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Mary Carol Lovitch, 8208 West Coventry Drive. I support the comments that have been made. I have had the opportunity to work with many of the teachers sitting in this room. I've gotten to know many of them too with my service to the board, and I know how dedicated they are to the children in our community, and many of them are also taxpayers in this community. I was here at the meeting last week or the week before and listened to the comments made at this table, and I was distressed because I thought, I'm not sure that they understand fully what teachers and EAs and OAs and secretaries and maintenance people actually do in our school and how much our children deserve and how much they appreciate us. I got a comment the other day which pleased me very, very much, and I was glad that I made that difference for that child. But I don't know if you really know what goes on in schools, how hard teachers work, how many hours they put in, how many hours others put in extra beyond the day that they aren't recognized for. And yet you continue to look at us just as a number on a piece of paper. We are human beings. You are human beings, and yet you treat us with seemingly disregard for the professions, the professionals that they are, the degree of education that they have, the dedication that they present day in and day out. I don't believe that people abuse a benefit that is offered to them. They will use the benefit when they need it, and there are some people who do need the benefit more than others, but then the ones who don't use those benefits kind of makes up for that. I know that Mr. Milzer, over the years, has been, worked very hard to save money in this district, and he's always looked for opportunities to save where he can. And as evident by your Fund 10, you have saved money over the last 25 years. I also feel that if a person is offered a benefit, they should be allowed to use it when they need it, because having a teacher go to see a doctor if they need it is better than having to constantly bring in a substitute teacher to cover a classroom if that teacher is out sick all the time because they were afraid to use the benefit offered to them. And I know being in classroom with substitute teachers is not always the best thing for the children. They miss academic progress because it's not the same as having a regular classroom teacher. So I ask that you consider what was said by the consultant, what was said by your administrative team, and please consider that you have saved $6 million in the last few years and that perhaps putting it off to a time when it will be necessary to cover a higher increase in your insurance costs, maybe then you can come back and say, "We really need to do this." And I think that most people would then feel better about agreeing with that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Hi, my name is Patty Jenna. I live in McQuanago. Is it okay for me to share my opinion?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I drive 35 minutes to and from work every day because I live in McQuanago. My parents are Franklin graduates. My grandparents still live in Franklin. I came to Franklin because it was home to me and because it had a lot of meaning. I've stayed in Franklin because I love what we do for kids. I have lived in McQuanago my entire life, my married life included. I open-enrolled my children in Franklin because I appreciate what the teachers do here in Franklin, and I wanted that for my kids, and so I brought them here. I went through divorce. I'm not able to bring my kids here anymore. I also drive in high gas prices and other things and still do it every day. Going through divorce and having three kids that I have full-time, my finances are very low. I've spoken with you over the retirement benefits. It's not something that you can control, but it's something I can't either. So when I look at finances being what they are and looking at increasing a deductible for my family, I can't just squeeze that money out of nowhere. I am, I don't have cable. I don't have a smartphone. I have a really dumb phone. I don't have iPads. I don't have any of those things that a lot of people do in this technological, you know, 21st century everything. My 16-year-old doesn't have his driver's license yet because I can't afford the insurance. I don't want to tell my kids, "I'm sorry, you think you might have strep throat. I can't afford to take you to the doctor right now. You're going to have to wait that extended amount of length before, you know, you really get sick, and then I have to take you in." I don't want to not be able to do that because I financially can't afford to take care of my children. I work really hard to be able to provide them with everything I possibly can, and this is a huge burden that you're asking me to take. And I have dedicated 20 years to being here and loving being here. And when I'm thinking, "Gosh, you know what? Maybe it would be better to switch somewhere else," those thoughts do creep in there, and I don't like that. I don't want to feel that way. I want to love coming to work. I want to love being here because I love my job and I love the kids. But it's really hard when you have to put your children first and your family first to say, "Is there something else I should be doing instead?" And it's really a scary thing because I've been doing this, is all I know. This is what I do. And so I would ask you to please take in mind other people that have other various situations that could financially be a huge burden for them as well, and to please think about what you're doing when you don't have to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
Hi. My name is Susan Berry. I also do not live in Franklin. May I address the board?
Yes.
I live in a community that struggles. I live in the community that has the highest unemployment rate in the state. I live in Racine, and I watch and I see what happens with my neighbors. My neighbors are all gainfully employed, luckily. I live next to the CEO of Wheaton-Franiscan. Do you know what it's like to sit there and be told that doctors will not move to Racine because of the school district? Businesses will not invest because of the school district. I hear that on a regular basis. Yes, I have incredibly high taxes. I understand what you're saying. I absolutely do. But the economic viability of your community is tied to your schools, and your schools are very important in attracting new businesses and people to come in. Please consider that. I would also like to speak to these initiatives that we've put in. All of these initiatives have been started for three or four years now. We have teachers who are invested in these, but they will go elsewhere and find employment. I've watched some go elsewhere already and find employment, and then your initiatives, which you approved for the good of the kids, and they are for the good of the kids, will no longer be, they'll be done by people who are coming and going, and they won't have the same effect. Please reconsider, for such a small amount of money, the impact that it can have long-term on this district. Thank you.
[applause]
I'm Brian Devlek. I'm a teacher at Franklin High School, reside in Greendale.
I'm Pedro Vasquez. I graduated last year from Franklin.
Basically, I'm here as a representative for the school and the community, the workforce. I do run a business. I just want to tell you about my experience on there. I ended up coming into teaching about 10 years ago. One of the factors due to the health insurance and the premium rates that were going up at the time. I'm going to say this, and I know it's probably going to offend some of the teachers, but I was a diehard Republican.[1176.51][1176.51][laughter] But what ended up happening is that I want to tell you what my experience was. Teaching is probably one of the hardest professions I've ever had to do. The amount of hours to be prepared to have 25 to 30 kids on the job site, or in my particular case, for a CEA class, is immense. The kids have to be fully and thoroughly working together at all the times, and we have to make sure that we are accountable for what we're doing. All these teachers that are here behind us are the ones that are working the hardest. I'm telling you, as a professional and still running a business, this is one of the hardest jobs that's out there. And I know that you guys have hired a great staff and a workforce, hence we're one of the top 50 schools in here, but there is a reason for it, and the reason is that these are dedicated teachers. And with the premium rates that we're doing, we're not getting paid the most, we're not getting paid the least, but we are comfortable where we're at, and we're just fighting for the rights that we have to sustain where we need to be. With the current cutbacks and the budgets that are going on there, and I understand the constraints that you guys are under, but there's got to be a give and take. And at this point in time, we don't want to lose qualified teachers. Mr. Vasquez is one of the students that came through our program, and he can tell you a little bit about what he went through.
All right. Well, I see a lot of these are teachers here, so I thought it'd be nice to have a student's perspective on how teachers work around here. You know, coming in from Franklin, I was pretty much, as Mr. Devlek would call, a jake-bag, just pretty much a slacker, you know? I admit it. Freshman and junior year, you know, the way I was going, I wasn't going anywhere in life. I was going to end up working a dead-end job anywhere, you know what I mean? So with the teachers here behind me, they started motivating me and pushing me really hard to start, pretty much exploring my opportunities. On senior year, I started pretty much, you know, I don't know how to say it, motivating myself, and I ended up enlisting into the National Guard. Pretty much, you know, without any of these teachers, I would have never found, especially Mr. Devlek, pushing me really hard. You know, it was really, it was a good experience for me. And, you know, a lot of them showed me I had what it takes, and it got me through basic training, AIT, and now I'm moving on to my duty station. And, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't choose to be anywhere else but here right now.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
[applause] Are there any other comments? All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I'd also like to say there's four seats up in the front for anyone who'd like to sit. Moving on to agenda item four, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Can I make that motion?
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, school board announcements. Are there any announcements?
Just keep the football rolling. It's a great game on Friday.
Speaking of the game on Friday, I attended the common council meeting last night, and the mayor is requesting any school board members that attend the football game to keep, in the spirit of doing things together with the council, that anyone who would like to sit with the aldermen together at the football game, he'd like to know if anyone would like to do that. So he just wanted me to pass that along. Okay, item six, board calendar. We have a regular board meeting Wednesday, November 13, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. We have a special board meeting Wednesday, December 4, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM, and a regular board meeting Wednesday, December 11, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item seven, reports and presentations. The budget update, tax levy approval. This is an action item, and we'll turn to Mr. Milzer. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is draft three of the budget for this year. As you recall, in June, we have the first draft of the budget to get us started. In August, we have the second draft, the annual meeting, and now this is generally our October budget. It's now the November budget because of Act 46 from the state. But this is the one where we have a lot more information than we've had before. We have the number of students that we're going to have for this year. We took that count, and we're told by the state how much aid we're going to get for the year, so we know that. The only piece of information on that list that we still don't have is the assessed value of the community, but we won't have that until the end of the month, something like that. As we, as we look at this, the budget was updated for the actual staff that we had. The originals were what staff we thought we'd have, open positions, estimates for who would come, that kind of thing. This is changed over for the actual staff that we have, the actual benefits, that kind of thing. So you'll see changes kind of all over the place because of that. It's good news. The operations tax levy is down over $874,000 from last year. Of course, we still have our debt service tax levy that's up due to the referendum projects that were approved, but that helps to offset that somewhat. We had estimated that the tax increase would be about 4.5%. It's actually coming in at about 3.1%, which is down over $400,000 from that earlier estimate. So definitely good news. We are still at the revenue limit with this. The tax effect we're projecting is about $36, $37 per $100,000 of assessed value for each property. And one of the things we'll want to keep in mind this year is that the city's doing a reassessment, so that amount could be uneven depending on how the reassessment goes in any given area or for any given property. If we look at the number of students, we had 20 fewer resident students than we projected. We did project an increase of 20, and it came out even as far as resident students. And for open enrollment students, we ended up with 22 fewer than we had projected, which brings our budget down a little smaller on both counts. Title funding was up about $76,000 from our earlier estimates. And as we go forward with this, this point in the process, because of Act 46, which gave additional funds to school districts to drive down local tax levies by not increasing the revenue limit but giving schools money, that was another good thing for us. We got an additional $272,000 from that based on our position in that formula, so that worked out real well, and that's why the deadlines have all been increased as far as approving the budget. We had to wait until we got the new numbers first. We got the first numbers, then the new numbers. And the only budget, the only date they didn't push off as far as a deadline was certifying the levy to the city and the state, which we have to do by Friday. So we'll have to approve the budget and the levies tonight, and then that will move us forward for the year. We won't, this will be our budget for the year now for draft three.
I guess I'm going to look for a motion before we have discussions. Do I hear a motion to approve budget draft number three, 2013, and the proposed, and the tax levy included as presented by Mr. Milzer? I'll make that motion. Motion by Mrs. Klein. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Is there any discussion?
Just a question of the 22 fewer.
We got an additional two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars from that, based on our position in that formula, so that worked out real well. And that's why the deadlines have all been increased as far as approving the budget. We had to wait until we got the new numbers first. We got the first numbers, then the new numbers. And the only budget, the only date they didn't push off, as far as a deadline, was certifying the levy to the city and the state, which we have to do by Friday. So we'll have to approve the budget and the levies tonight, and then that will move us forward for the year. We won't, this will be our budget for the year now for Draft 3.
I guess I'm gonna look for a motion before we have discussions. Do I hear a motion to approve Budget Draft Number 3, 2013, and the proposed, and the tax levy included as presented by Mr. Millsar?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Klein, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion?
Just a question of the twenty-two fewer, now residents. Did that surprise you, and why, what's the...
The twenty-two fewer open enrollment students?
Yes.
Yeah. It is kind of surprising. We opened a number of seats, but what can happen is that we do get those kids, but other children that are in the middle somewhere that we thought were continuing decided to leave and go somewhere else. So, we filled seats. We were conservative on the number of seats we'd fill out of that. We got those students, but others left, which is a problem that we, we can't get by. We can't get the information from them that they're thinking of leaving, and then base our seats on that. So that's, that'll be an ongoing issue for us, I guess.
And you indicated that we got more aid as a result of the recent action at the state level. However, it looks like our aid is actually down from the August number.
Right.
But we got more money.
Right. We got more, we got more money than they were going to give us originally, and because our entire budget is smaller, that's going farther for us. So, we didn't have to hit the estimate. We're actually below the estimate that we had for equalization aid. But because our budget is smaller, that's going farther for us and actually reducing things further.
And that's really a function of the number of students?
Right. Both of those, the resident students and the open enrollment students.
Is there any other discussion?
I guess it's, the tax levy goes up three-point-five, correct?
Three-point-one.
Three-point-one, okay.
And in that, we did not project any growth in the value of the community. So it's three-point-one in dollars, three-point-one in rate.
And Jim, based on my, based on my calculation, which could be wrong, I admit, the operating levy actually went down two-point-nine percent, but that's the referendum, then that's what offset it to the, to the three-point-one overall.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, operating-wise, we're doing very well.
Right, right.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Can I say yes? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Alright, Item 70 is the District Health and Dental Insurance Renewal Presentation, and that also is an action item.
Okay. We had, we had a presentation at our last meeting, and we do have Rayanne Bodry and Kelly Jagelski here from the Horton Group, in case you have any questions. It's Kelly's birthday, so she's, you know, this was the best thing that you'd think of doing.
Just, I think we might have questions, most likely.
Sure. The insurance, as you know, has been bid out. It's been narrowed down to two companies. A recommendation has been made on the lowest-cost companies, WCA of that. That was in the Horton Group recommendation that they made at the last meeting the subcommittee met. I got the information out on that about the discussion there. That was good. That produced a request for more information, and we went back to WCA and asked them for additional reductions based on different levels of our plan that we were looking for there, and they got back to us with those. We do need to make a decision tonight to have time to implement this, especially if we do the change. So I think the three issues that we have to take care of is, is which insurance company we would go with, then if there were any plan design changes that the board wanted, and then the last issue would be dental, and choosing a provider for that. And of course, the Delta Dental was the recommended provider on that one for a savings of fifty-four thousand dollars with the same plan that we had.
Okay. So Mr. Millsar said we need to discuss which insurance provider we would go with, and I think we need to open discussion on that then. I don't believe we had any objection in our other discussions in changing to WCA.
And that is the Cassell's recommendation, correct?
That's correct. We just didn't have any formal movement on that, so we definitely need to make that decision this evening.
Could you repeat your entire recommendation, just for everyone's benefit? Rayanne, please.
We were making a recommendation that the district changed to the WCA health insurance program with the six-month, and then a following subsequent twelve-month renewal based on the premium rates that were given earlier on. And we have a guarantee then through July 1st of 2014, no, 2015, sorry about that. And then we were also making a recommendation to move the district's dental plans, the three different dental plans, to Delta Dental for an additional savings. That was a two-year rate guarantee of the fifty-four thousand dollars. So overall, that's bringing us down to roughly a two-percent overall rate increase over that next eighteen months. We were looking at what that potential cost was, and our recommendation was we move forward in that vein.
Thank you.
Two percent was just the whole package, dental and health, or just health?
I think by the time we had gotten done with the overall negotiations with WCA, where we had ended up with the original six months and then the following, there was an overall increase of roughly about two percent over the current rates. That did include the dental reduction.
And dental, right now, is, is with Humana?
The dental and the vision, the voluntary vision benefits are both with Humana. There's no, the dent, or I'm sorry, the vision had a four-year rate guarantee. There's no reason to move that. It's a good benefit. I think the individuals that have enrolled in that, it's a voluntary basis, have really enjoyed that benefit. And with the dental, we would've had an additional, we would've had until July 1st to make that change, but the reality is the additional savings is simply not worth making that wait. So if we were gonna change the medical, there's no reason not to change the dental at this point in time.
Jim, are you looking for a motion before we have a discussion?
The motion to change to WCA is, yes.
We can tackle these in any particular order, and, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think movement to the dental, with the recommendation of moving it to the Delta Dental is something that I think makes sense. So I would make that motion. That would be effective January 1?
Correct.
To move our dental to Delta Dental for a two-year contract.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nielsen to move to the Delta Dental as recommended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion?
No. It's the same coverage as we currently have in hand. I think it makes sense.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Next, we want to move on to switching to the WCA as the carrier, maybe that, the health insurance carrier.
Are you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll move that we use WCA as our health carrier.
Second.
And that, do we need that motion to be for the eighteen months, or do we need, Mr. Millsar, do we need just a straight?
I think we should state the eighteen months, if that's okay.
Could I ask that you state it in the six-month?
Six and twelve, yeah.
It just makes things a little bit more formal for the faculty compliance.
I'll amend my motion to that. Are you, you gonna say the whole thing?
Yeah, let's say that, for Megan's benefit, let's have the whole motion.
I move that we use WCA for our health insurance carrier for both the six months and the twelve months following. That's efficient?
That's good enough. So we have a motion by Mr. Alexandrovich, and did you second Mr. Nielsen?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion on change in the carrier to WCA?
The only discussion I would add is that that was indeed the consultant's recommendation as well as the administration's recommendation, and I support it. I think it makes sense.
And the carrier, I mean, the benefits basically stay the same between Humana and WCA?
At this point, we have not tackled the plan design change. This is just, what you've approved at this point is the change to a carrier.
Okay. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Sure. Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
I say yes. Mr. Wit, Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Now we have a lot to discuss here. At the, at the subcommittee meeting, one of the things that we did all agree on was...
Waiver of premium.
Yeah, the waiver of premium.
Mm-hmm.
Do we wanna talk about that a little bit, or does anyone wanna make a motion on that?
You mean self-funding.
Self-funding.
Not, not eliminating it, but self-funding.
Eliminating the insurance of carrying it, because this, we'll carry that ourselves at the school.
And then have, so there's a recommendation, or not recommendation, but assurance that if anyone would have to dip into that, that the district would cover those expenses. So I don't know if that would be later in the form of a policy, or how we'd actually wanna do that, Judy, but we want something in there, so there's some assurance.
Jim, I just had a question for you that I thought of later. Do you anticipate there would be a lot of administration regarding carrying that out? I mean, I know you said it doesn't happen very often, but...
Right. I don't, I don't think so in this case.
Okay.
We wouldn't be doing a lot of insurance-type work with it. It's really just making sure that, of the qualifications, and then paying the invoices for them.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the...
Waiver of premium.
I'll make a motion that we self-fund the waiver of premium through the district and drop the, the carrier through an insurance company.
We have a motion by Mrs. Klein. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Is there any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
I'll say yes. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
I also would let the district know that I am certain WCA would be willing to offer the administration advice and guidance as to who would be appropriate on that benefit, so that it wouldn't be left in someone's hands. It would be still an insurance carrier recommendation, and just for the district's protection.
Thank you. Mr. Millsar, do you have, or do you have any suggestion where we should go now, or...
It's, it seemed like from the list of options, the deductible you might wanna discuss, we had two other options, so there's several there to consider.
Our, our subcommittee did discuss deduct, you know, whether we wanted to change a deductible, or the copays, or anything with the prescription rates. I think our subcommittee, I think we all agreed...
No, we did not all agree.
No, we, we agreed on prescriptions that we didn't.
No, we didn't agree. We did not all agree.
That we didn't wanna change them?
No. We did not all agree. No, we did not all agree.
What, I know that there wasn't total agreement, but what we did wrap it up with is that the original proposal was to move the network deductible from where it was. The, one of the recommendations was to go to two-fifty, five-hundred in-network, out-of-network was five-hundred to one-thousand. And we agreed that we should look at something that was less than that, 'cause there's no sense hitting that hard. So there we had the two other options laid out here of one-hundred, three-hundred in-network and four-hundred, eight-hundred, hundred not-network, and two-hundred, four-hundred in-network and four-fifty, nine-hundred out-of-network.
And it was the same.
If we went with the two-hundred, four-hundred in，在network and four-fifty, nine-hundred out-of-network, that would be a one-percent savings to the district.
Were all the one percent?
As we save money, one of the calculations that I did was if we could get savings up to three percent. I'm not advocating that, but if we did, it was for mathematics purposes. Right now, a family, I asked Jim for the numbers, plan pays one-thousand, six-ninety-two per month. If there's a three-percent savings, the family plan would, would you pay six dollars and nine cents less a month, therefore saving seventy-three dollars and eight cents annually. Now, if you don't go to the doctor, that's one-hundred percent savings. If you do go to the doctor a lot, and you have medical costs, you will have additional expenses. But who should be paying for the health insurance? I think it's the people who are using the plan. And people who are absolutely healthy and have no expenses should get the savings.
I'm gonna ask, we, we listened to your comments respectfully, so I'm gonna ask that you let the board have our discussion, please, and let us make our decisions. Thank you.
At the subcommittee meeting, I threw out that probably twenty percent of the participants incur eighty percent of the cost of the health insurance. That's the Pareto Principle, the eighty-twenty rule. It usually stands the test, and therefore eighty percent of our employees are relatively healthy. So the savings that you would incur from paying lower premiums, eighty percent of the teachers would incur most of those savings, or all eighty percent of the employees. The twenty percent who are using the insurance the most would be paying more, because they'd be paying deductibles and copays, but they're getting the benefit. Yes, they're also the ones who are, are sick, and that seems to be an additional burden, but the people who are using the benefits should be paying for it. I think if we do things like this, the savings that we'll incur now will bring us lower bids in the future, because hopefully people will use the benefits prudently, and we should have a better experience. Because hopefully, people will use the benefits prudently, and we should have a better experience.
When I look out here in the audience, I don't think that 80% of our employees are willing to throw 20% of their colleagues under the bus.
My definition of under the bus is a lot different than yours. That $10 doesn't seem to do it for me.
It's, it's all in everyone's opinion.
True.
I'd like to share some, some thoughts that I had, um, asked Dr. Pats to share with the committee. I'd like to share them with the rest of the board. I, uh, I wrote this a week ago, Monday. Um, "I didn't say much regarding health insurance at our meeting on Wednesday. I was still sorting out my thoughts on the issue. I've since had time to formulate some ideas that I'd like to share with the committee, and now with everybody else." First of all, I'd like to state that I, I do think that long-term, we will need to make plan modifications. Um, it's not financially sustainable to continue with the plan as it's always been, and I don't think that, given the current financial climate and trends in both private and public sector health insurance, that our community will continue to support the level of health insurance benefits that we're currently providing, because these are great benefits. All of us up here would probably kill to have them, but you guys do earn them. So, um, anyway, that's an aside. That said, I'm not convinced that now is the right time to make these changes, with the notable exception of self-funding the premium waiver, which I am in favor of doing now. "We have a responsibility to our community to maintain and continuously improve our students' achievement. One of the single biggest factors in that is the quality of instruction that they receive from our staff members. Our district is in a position now where we can hire the most talented and qualified teachers possible for just about any position that we want. It's an enviable situation and is due to several factors. Compensation and culture are two important ones, but not the only ones. I worry that making too drastic of changes too quickly and without a strong financial incentive to do so will make us less competitive compared to surrounding districts when hiring and retaining staff. I also worry about these potential changes sending a message to our staff that they are not valued and subject to the whims of the board, particularly given the other changes that have been imposed on them in the last couple of years. We need to weigh these considerations and balance them with the potential cost savings of making the plan changes. I do not want us to sell our employees' trust in us for a relatively small cost savings. Strategically, waiting six to 18 months to make these changes could have some very real benefits for us, the district. One, assuming that other districts are making these same types of changes, and I believe they are, it could give us a competitive advantage from an HR perspective. Two, Rayanne and her experts have said that there is a very high probability that we would save even more money if we rebid these changes in the future. Granted, we will be paying the higher premiums in the interim, but potentially, it could more than offset, it could be more than offset for a net savings long-term. Three, it gives our employees time to plan for the impending changes and demonstrates that we value their efforts and opinions. Four, it gives us time to plan for how to best utilize the attained savings. Will we use it to relieve future tax increases, to increase programming, or to help fund the new compensation model, for example? And then my closing comments were just, thanks for serving on this committee. I recognize that it's a complicated and difficult situation, so I appreciate your efforts and willingness to consider my opinions. That pretty sums up my opinion, and it hasn't changed since last week. Um, and, um, so I'm, I'm not in favor of making any plan changes at this time.
Can you restate what, what she was talking about, the recommendations about holding off on changing the plan?
When we had talked the last time, I had shared with you that both WCA and Humana had mentioned that they had gone to their, to the bare-bones minimum bid, and that we were getting less for a decrement in any of these plan changes than we otherwise would have had they not come to the floor. And that remains to be true, and we've reiterated that, and we've asked the actuaries at Milliman who work with WCA and the underwriters at Humana to restate that to make sure we weren't giving too much credibility to that answer. Normally, some of these plan changes, deductibles, et cetera, would have been worth more off, but it depends on the starting point. And so because they've come to already bottom basement prices to earn your business or to retain your business, the values are just simply not as, as large as they would be.
Does that mean that next year, when they raise the premium substantially, they'll be willing to give us bigger discounts?
Typically, yes. Change is worth a lot more when the change is necessary to earn something. Um, they're also looking at the difference in value between network discounting. It was something that Humana did last year, or a year and a half ago, when they looked to earn your business. They're, they're potentially saying, our discounts, our contracts with the provider systems are gonna drive the utilization differently. The providers are taking more ownership, which is true with the PACA these days. So you will see differences much greater than the other, and, yeah, you might not be able to make as incremental of a plan change, but you'll be looking at different values for those changes.
How much of that, though, is a function of the fact that you, when you put the bid out, you didn't bid for any plan changes, you just, you bid the same plan? If you were gonna do this again, and I, I understand administration is suggesting that 18 months out, you would be bidding this with plan changes.
When, I'm sorry, when we sent the RFP out, Mrs. Wachowski, we did ask for plan changes. We wanted to start with an apples-to-apples comparison, so then we knew what the value of the plan changes were going to be. We always strive to finish those negotiations to say, what is the floor? We wanna make sure that we can offer the best value and the very best starting point. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we've driven those prices down as hard, as hard as we possibly could to get the longest-term deal, and that does mean that it changes the decrement value because they're pricing those out for an 18-month period.
Are you saying, then, that you, you, if you would've bid it with those changes in, instead of looking at decrements, as you said, you'd be looking at add-ons if you would not make the change? I mean, it'd just be the opposite direction, but that's not the way it was presented to us. I guess I don't understand what you're saying as far as, you did bid, the, the initial bid was with plan changes, but what was brought to us was a, a comparison with no changes. And then you gave us, gave us the savings off of that initial bid, so I'm confused.
We asked, we asked in the initial.
We asked in the initial bids that they would go ahead and bid the, as close to the same plan as possible, so we knew what the starting point for all of the carriers was. In that first initial presentation, what we had given to you was we showed you where every carrier was, the two we recommended, and we asked your permission to go back and negotiate further with them. Then we brought back that, that first set of decrements. You recommended going to an ad hoc committee and asked for some additional plan options, which were then provided subsequent to that. So that was option one, I believe, and option two. So we had the decrements started, and we had put those forward in the last presentation, but the initial one was, here's who bid, here's where they came in, and we're asking your permission to go ahead and continue to negotiate with these two carriers. And we talked about some plan discussion at that point, some plan options. We then presented that last week with the ones that we had, and you went to ad hoc committee.
And I was looking at some of the other benefits that are offered, and I wanted to get more comparison than what I did, but I did find, I know that Greendale has a $250 deductible and a $25 office visit, which I'm not saying we need to go and match Greendale, but just as a point of comparison. Do you have any other districts that you, that you represent that you could give us some ideas of where they are, or do you have any that are sitting at, at a zero right now? For office visit?
I work with 23 school districts, districts in the state of Wisconsin. The closest ones would be, for example, Greenfield, Shorewood, um, Nicolay High School, and they've all had various degrees of experience, challenges. Some of them remain with WA because, quite frankly, no one has bid on their, on their, they have no competition based on some pretty ugly experience and, and honestly, size of group. We talked about that in the first meeting. You guys are a very desirable group to get. There's some, there's a lot of bodies here. There's some, some decent budget. The benefits have been calm over time. Greenfield, for example, has been self-funded for a while. They went to a $2,000, $4,000 deductible, but they fund most of it with, through, through a health reimbursement account. So they don't have an office visit copay.
Who was that?
That's Greenfield. I work with them. Shorewood has a $10 office visit copay, but a very small deductible. So it depends on where the districts have needed to be. Every one, every one of them has different budgetary constraints and necessities, and they've all gotten various challenges across the state. I've had Plymouth and Sheboygan Falls actually got rate decreases and were able to maintain the same plans that they've had for the last, quite frankly, 10 years. So they've not made a plan change, but they did have to make a carrier change similar to what we did last year, and they've decided to put off their plan changes, quite frankly, and I'll say I typically recommend that, for the time when you're getting an increase instead of a decrease. They've been consistently having one-year or one-year contracts with a not to exceed second year, so they've made those plan changes when they've gotten the second year.
It's every, it's all over.
Yeah, yeah. Because we have a decrease from Humana, but an overall increase from where we were with, with Humana, the one we're coming off of, right? So we're a little bit of an increase, but not as bad as it could have been.
Well, and, you know, the thing is, is we are starting from a pretty low point. With the Humana rates where they stood are, again, lower than we had for 2010, 11. So when we first made this change, we saved money moving to Humana, so we're down, you know, so it's a smaller increase, but yes, it's a savings to move.
When was the last time we had a change in the rate, the deductible? Many years?
Many years, yeah. I don't recall one. Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the prescription drug plan, and I think that's something that everybody, more, more often than not, people are gonna be tapping into that, and so with, with the, um, the proposed savings on the co-payments for prescriptions, I, I don't see a real upside to rocking that boat on the, um, on the prescription plan. I mean, if we're just looking at, at parsing this out, because we gotta, I know it's uncomfortable, but we gotta figure out what we're gonna do here.
Excuse me, that's what I was saying, Debbie. I thought, I thought we were all in agreement on the prescription, that we did not wanna make any cha- You wanted to make changes to prescriptions?
No, I did not wanna make any changes.
Okay. That's what I'm saying, that we didn't wanna make any changes to the prescription. I know, I know you didn't agree on the other parts, but,
Right.
but that's what I'm trying to say, that, that we didn't want anyone to have any change to their prescriptions.
Yeah. If you need to take a prescription, you ought to get it.
I think those get used more often than, than anything. I, I just, I think that if we were to entertain a change to a $10 office copay from a $0 office copay, that, that's gonna be, that would be money that could be used toward projects that we have coming up. Um, we're gonna talk about a pool project. We're gonna talk about all the other monies that's saved in the district, and it's, um, I mean, it'd be, it's a $10 office copay. I mean, I, I just, I don't know what else to say. It's, it's a, it's a really good benefit, so, but that's something that we're gonna have to have a discussion on. You know, the other part, Ellen, you were talking about a 3% savings. I don't, I don't think we're, you know, that was just a number you picked, but on a family plan, that 3% savings would yield about $78, you said, right?
Uh, 73.08.
Yeah, which we're, which we're not going to, to be there, and that's fine, but if you were to look at it another way, and you had mentioned the $200 deductible, that would be an extra $100 in exposure with a $78 savings. $73 savings. So for a $27 exposure per employee, per year, that, the district would yield a $100,000 overall benefit. So, you know, that's another way of, of looking at it, so, but, I don't know, I wanna, I wanna go there.
So you're saying that the district would save $100,000 by doing that?
By doing what? Changing the deductible?
What you just said, that $73 a year.
No, what I'm saying is that a change to a $200 deductible has a savings over an 18-month period of the 90, of the 97 or 98,000. And I was just, just parsing that out, how, how you get down to the individual level. So, um, but...
I'm in favor of option two and option five, the, going to the $200 and $400 deductible and the $10 copay.
Just, I'm branching off just a little bit, but option nine, waiver premium, did we have a motion? Did we pass it?
Yes.
Yeah. So that, that one's put to bed. Do you need a motion to, uh, accept option two of a 200 and 400 in-network deductible and option five to have a $10 network copay?
Are you making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion?
I think, I think it's a reasonable change. I know, um, when I look around the community, when I look at my own kids and what they pay for insurance, I don't think this is unreasonable. And as we've heard administration say, these changes are coming. It is unsustainable what we have going right now. Do we do it now or later? I think it's very, the future is very uncertain with the healthcare situation. Um, also, state funding is uncertain. It's important to be in the best financial situation we can be going forward. I think this, um, it's, it's shared, the, you also benefit from a lower premium going forward. You're not, we're not taking away your benefit. It's, it's what our community, I think, would find reasonable. And I don't think our community would find that we are not respecting staff, we're not appreciating your work. I don't want this to be about that. I want it to be, we need to kind of recognize what's going on in the health, in the healthcare market. It affects all of us. It's not just the schools. I mean, everybody here at the table has had to make changes, and I don't think it's unreasonable.
I just think it's bad form when we sit here at this table and we discuss each of our own personal horror stories with healthcare. I just, I think that, I think that's just out of line, because when I listen to you talk about your health insurance, and I know Mr. Nielsen's brought up his, and Mrs. Evans has brought up her health insurance, I just think it's bad form, because to me, it sounds like you're, you're saying, well, I got hurt, so I'm gonna hurt you. That's how it sounds to me. I mean, because if we're gonna do that, quite honestly, I think I'm the winner here out of the seven of us for what my husband's health insurance is. But I don't sit here at this table and say, boo hoo, poor me, poor my family. You know, we are able to keep things status quo right now. These people are intelligent people. They know that there is a change coming, but we don't need to make it right now. We can keep things as-is. We can go with what the recommendation of the insurance experts is, keep things as-is, and look towards the future to, to the real possibility of having a lesser increase or even a decrease in what, what we're gonna pay for our insurance benefits. But because we can change them now, doesn't mean we have to. We're sitting very well financially right now. We just passed a, a good budget.
The question isn't whether we can change it. The question is whether we should change it, and any time that you can generate savings.
If you know, you just want to.
Anytime you can generate savings, you should take the savings. The burden in hand is worth two in the bush.
Is the savings gonna be worth it when we start losing our dedicated employees?
We're better than a pool.
Okay, is there any other discussion from the board?
Ms. Evans, I might just ask that the motion be clear in terms of moving to a $200 and $400 in-network deductible and a 450, 900 non-network deductible, and that option five is a $10 network co-pay, a $25 non-network co-pay, a $25 urgent care co-pay, and a $100 emergency room co-pay.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Alexandrovich, second by Mrs. Evans. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
I say ayes.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you. Okay.
That's why he wanted to have this meeting Monday night instead of tonight.
We'll move on to item 7C, the Franklin High School swimming pool proposal. This is also an action item. And Mr. Milzer again.
My night. We did talk about the pool extensively, and if you remember, at the end of our discussion, it came down to, we held off on any decision with the pool until we saw what would happen with the budget, and whether the pool renovations could be included in that or not, and that the board would make a decision after that. So that's the point we're at. There wasn't any more presentation we would do tonight. We can answer questions if you'd like, but the, the pool renovation is, is included in the budget as it stands. And if, depending on the funding source for Fund 10, if we didn't do the pool, we would put that back into day-to-day maintenance operations, and the, the other funding for the donations and so forth would be used for something else at some point down the line.
And you had said to me, you had clarified to me, the day-to-day means the little maintenance things that come up?
Right.
So it's not taking away from any major projects?
All the projects, as, as were outlined, would be done.
Right.
Right. It's not the, the list of maintenance projects.
Jim, the other thing that held it up from being voted on last time was the question as to what the funding was gonna be coming from the state, and there was some concern that there would be significant changes to it potentially. And from what you presented, there is no real significant changes that would kill this.
Right. Right.
Are you looking for a motion just to proceed with the pool proposal or with a dollar amount?
I think just to proceed with the pool project as we've outlined it. We'd still have to go for pricing on the individual pieces of it, at least some of them.
I would make that motion to, to move ahead with the pool, swimming pool, the Franklin High School swimming pool proposal.
A second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Larson and a second by Mrs. Schleter. Is there any discussion?
And why is this the best use of these dollars? Of all the things we could be doing, why the pool right now?
I think the biggest thing, it would be the safety issue of the deck. We have people slipping and falling now. We have elderly people and their little kids that are going to run, no matter what the sign says on the wall, and we need to make sure that we don't have that going on. And once, once you touch a room like that, or you're gonna completely blow the deck off and start over, you may as well take care of all your problems in there and make, make it into a good facility. And I think the, the $325,000, $350,000 that'll take, instead of, you know, keeping our eye on a $3.5 million pool someday, someday, is just a good investment, especially for the amount of time the community uses that pool.
I think it's gonna, it'd be a great community improvement and asset. That's what, I agree with you. There's a lot of people that use it in the community outside of, you know, just the district.
Does this get this up to the state standards for swim needs and such?
Yes.
So there's potential for revenue that way, too.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Larson, second by Mrs. Schleter. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
And I say ayes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have the item 7D, review of the 2014, 15, and 2015, 16 school calendar drafts. Dr. Miller.
Mr. Milzer. I provided to you today via Board Docs, the drafts of the calendars for 14, 15, and 15, 16. And I do apologize that you just received them today, but I was meeting with a group of representative employees last night and getting bits of feedback that were included in, in the revisions to these drafts. So wanted to have, give you an opportunity to take a look at how the calendar will play out in the next two years. We've always tried to issue two calendars at a time, just to give people lots of notice about what our school vacations would be like, so that they could do some family planning around that. So I think instead of explaining everything on this calendar, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about how it's laid out or the process, whatever you'd like to discuss.
I have a question. Is the total number of professional development days the same? Or, I know, they're distributed differently, so it's kind of hard for me to, to compare what we've done in the past.
Actually, there are more professional development days, right?
There are more, okay.
We found ways to increase the number of professional days in this calendar. We have to work within the parameters of the state, which is we must come up with 190, excuse me, 180 days for students to be in attendance, and you'll see that's the case in, in each of these calendars. And in addition to that, we have to count instructional hours for students, and we have to fall within the parameters provided by the state. And we, we well exceed the number of hours at the elementary, middle school, and, and also at the high school. So we definitely meet the criteria of the state, and we were able to build the, a calendar in which we could add some more professional development time while maintaining all of our instructional time with students.
So how many more days have you added?
Um...
That's somewhere on here?
Yeah, I think it's a probably two or one and a half actual additional professional development days. What you'll see is we've moved away from the half-days on Wednesdays. The feedback that we've gotten over the years is, it's somewhat problematic for families to arrange. In addition, it's somewhat disruptive for teachers in the middle of the week. They get going with something, and then by midweek, the, the whole schedule changes in the school on a professional development day that's a half-day, and it just, it's, it's, so we're, we really want to have the opportunity to put those on Mondays and Fridays. We really believe that families are gonna like that a whole lot better, in terms of them getting time off of work to, to care for their own children. So that was one of the, the changes that was made in this calendar.
And to maximize work productivity, we often work K-12. And because we bus the majority of all of our students in Franklin, we have three different release times across the district. So by the time you get everybody released, you have about an hour for those K-12 groups where they're collectively together. So you're not getting, on a professional development full day, you're getting, you know, all eight hours of work. And on those days, while it's a two-and-a-half-hour release for the students, not that the other people are being productive, they're just not collaborating and getting the decisions made in those units that we'd like them to make in. So the teachers find that frustrating to work and wait for their colleagues and new work. So that was another one of the considerations.
Do you anticipate that with the additional professional development days, that less release time will be needed for teachers?
One of the reasons we're increasing professional development time internal to the school calendar here and, is because of the RTI initiative. Currently, we've had to use a lot of substitute teachers to be in classrooms, so teachers could be out of the classrooms meeting to discuss students who need interventions. So we are going to use these professional development days now, when students aren't there, to conduct those meetings, which means the students will have fewer substitute teachers.
That's good.
What does the hash mark or the slash?
That means it's a half-day.
Are there days included for inclement weather days?
We have via the state up to five days for inclement weather, actually.
Or you have to make it up?
Right. But in this district, we've always made up the third day with students.
So two days technically?
Right.
Okay.
But it was been five? Or that was three? Did they change that?
The state, the state gives you up to five days for inclement weather.
Did you do a survey at one time of, was it parents or teachers about the half-days? That they preferred them?
We'd done that in the, building the previous calendars, and they, they weren't crazy about it, but they were supportive, you know, of us continuing. And the key for us was we, we put those half-days in place because we really needed to meet with teachers more frequently, and the half-days allowed us to do that. But because we were able to add a little more professional development time in this calendar, we're still meeting frequently enough to keep initiatives going. One of the things that the teachers have expressed pretty strongly, and all, and other personnel, is having spring break in March this year is a little tough on some of them, because their children in our other school districts, and their, their breaks don't match up. And fortunately, Easter is not quite as late in the next two years, and we could keep Easter the traditional time period, which is the week after. That was something that the teachers would really wanted to maintain.
And this does that in both years?
Yes.
Spring break is still tied to Easter?
Yes, it is.
And that's what the Milwaukee County does in general, or?
It's kind of all over the map. Some are before, a week before, some are the week after. And now, this year, there's some, like Franklin, in March, because it was the end of April. It was very, very late. But...
Do we always have trimesters for elementary?
We have not. I'll let...
Have what?
Trimesters.
Great for learning.
Do you want to speak to that for a moment?
Sure. This is coming out of our grading for learning committee, and, you know, this is my ninth year in the district, and since my first year in the district, I started hearing from elementary teachers about, "Oh, we need to review our report card, and we should be thinking about trimesters." And every time, I had to answer and say, "This is bigger than just doing a report card, and it's bigger than just, you know, you don't just do this." And so we put together basically a three-year process of moving towards a standard-based learning system, as you have heard about. And the first year, last year, was Jamie Fekler headed up, headed up a pretty large committee of 40 teachers, K-12, some parents, and looked at grading practices that are grading for learning and getting out of the punitive business of using grades as weapons and so on. And so that was the first year. And as part of that discussion, it was time for what people had been asking for, for a long time, to come to the surface about, should we, at the elementary level, not have quarters? And because at the elementary level, there are so many things that happen in the beginning of a, of a school year, where kids are learning procedures and processes that if they're not, if we don't take the time to do that, we pay a price in management and classroom practices later on in the year. And so workshop model is an example of this. Some things in everyday math are an example of this. And what happens is that first nine week comes up so quickly that, that it's, the teachers are saying, "We haven't sunk into our curriculum enough yet to be able to give accurate representations of kids' learning, and we'd like to have more, you know, more time." The grading, there's no research that supports that grading contributes to learning, and there's nothing wrong with doing it less frequently, especially since we have Power School as a communication tool for, where parents can keep track of, of student progress. And we're expanding that to the K-1 and 2 level, which doesn't have that now. And so we have lots of other communication methods for people to keep track of, kids and families to keep track of student learning, where an actual event of grading isn't, isn't as necessary as frequently as every quarter. We're still keeping quarters at the middle school and the high school. And if you do some searching around about trimesters, what happens is you find out that high schools have, there are lots of high schools around that have trimesters. Not around here, but you see more high schools in, using trimesters for similar reasons. So it was, it was time. It was part of a, you know, a larger process, and it obviously had an effect on the way the calendar was laid out.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. I had one other question on the calendar, too, before we vote. And this is kind of getting into details, which maybe isn't appropriate, but I noticed in the 15, 16 calendar, that there are two Mondays where the kids have off of school that are only separated by another break by a week. And I, I didn't know, and other professional development days by a week. The first is, is December 7th, which is just, there's one full week between a four-and-a-half-day break for Thanksgiving, and then the kids go back to school for five days, and then they have a day off. And then the other one was February 1st, where the kids have either a three or four, I think a three-day weekend, and then they go back to school for five days, and then they have a Monday off. So I don't know if parents are gonna find that frustrating if they're trying to plan a trip or something. I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that, that, that that's what we've got.
One of the things with the RTI process is that you have to meet every six to eight weeks. You have this window in which you have to reconvene that team. So there isn't a lot of flexibility there. But tho- those days potentially could move if, if we look at that more closely and see that maybe it should move to that Friday of that week, and that would be better stretch of time. But we have to stay close within that six-to-eight week, eight-week window for the RTI process.
Okay. Thank you.
Item eight, future agenda items. We have the budget review process update on November 13th, and we have youth options, November 13th, new course approvals, November 13th, impact fee discussion on November 13th, and then the board superintendent roles and responsibilities, December 4th. Any comments or questions on that?
Japan trip, I don't know if that needs to be listed on here, but that was put out in email. Japan trip approval?
That's on the 13th.
Coming up on the 13th?
Yeah.
So that'll be on that, too. I don't know if it needs to necessarily be...
Oh, yeah, it doesn't have to be on here, but, yeah, sometimes agenda items.
One thing that, that I've been wondering if maybe it's, it's almost time for another update, and Mike mentioned early, was, was grading for learning. And the reason I bring that up is because I've had a couple of community members approach me in the last month or so, and there seems to be some misinformation. Somebody said, "I heard elementary kids aren't gonna get graded," or "Kids aren't gonna get graded until they're in middle school." And somebody else had some concerns about how it would impact her son's ability to get into college. So I, I know we've had some parent sessions, but I just wanted to bring that to the administration's attention, that, that we maybe need to do a little bit of communication.
We, we do have plans. We're working, finalizing dates on those, to do them. We were trying to figure out the best venue so people would attend and so Mike kind of worked through that. And we're gonna do multiple meetings on building sites like through PTO or whatever because we felt that we would get better attendance. But your point's well taken because we've, we've heard the same.
Right, it's on the radar, it's on the radar. And, you know, we're talking about other methods besides face-to-face where they have a frequently asked questions section on our websites.
Right.
That type of thing, too. Because implementation is for next fall. And so, to your point, it's not too soon to continue getting that, those work that we're on.
And I didn't feel like I had all the latest information to really fill them in either, so, so, yeah. That's good, thanks.
Thank you. And item nine is the board meeting debriefing. Are there any comments?
I just want to say that I'm really disappointed in, in our decision to change the insurance. I, I just think that it's short-sighted at this point in time.
I don't think that's a proper comment because we are supposed to respect the decision of the board.
Okay, I do respect the decision of the board. But personally, I, I think we, we might have made a mistake tonight.
I concur with you, Mrs. Klein.
Thanks for supporting the decision of the board.
That's an impromptu, I'd like to say that on the card, were we respectful of all persons and positions at the table? I felt that...
I was a little attacked, Debbie. I, I really didn't think that I personalized any of my comments. So I, I don't understand your comment for one thing. And I'm not sure how it added to the discussion.
That's noted, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, you had just mentioned that there's no, there's no place for that, personalizing the comment. And that's, and that's fine, but that's certainly what, you know, what we heard. So, I mean, it's, it works on both sides. I, you know, I wish I could have gotten some more anecdotal information than just Greendale, but I am cognizant of the fact that we want to make sure that our benefits are as great as they can be and in line with, not, not in line, but aware of what everyone else is providing around us because of that portability feature. And I didn't want to go to a $25 office visit copay and we didn't go to a $250 deductible. So, I mean, this wasn't fun, it's never fun when you go through stuff like this. And so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have it. But I think, you know, I don't think that, that the discussion that we had here was, was way out of line. I think it was just, it got emotional and it's, you know, you're gonna have that. But I think to say that we brought personalization into what I think might have been just a little overboard because I, I mean, because that's what we were hearing, too. So, I tried to keep it objective, but it's hard when you're, when, because it hits right to the bone. I mean, it goes right to the core, so. But, I mean, I, I know people don't want to hear the numbers, but, I mean, when we look at what the dental savings and the plan changes, as modest as they were, in my humble opinion, it was a $284,000 savings to the district. And I'd have a hard time justifying a conversation with a neighbor that we didn't feel it was appropriate to change a copay from zero to 10 when the overall package and deductible, you know, from 100 to 200 for, for a community savings of $284,000. I think it was justified and I don't think it was personal and I don't think we were attacking.
And I don't think they're not appreciated. I spend hundreds of hours in the schools and they're, they work hard and I know that. And I told them today. And they're not, it's not that they're not appreciated at all.
I appreciate every one of them. I have no reason to not want the best for this district, I have children in this district, so.
Right, I guess, do we need to do more to make sure they appreciate, that we know that we, that we're doing, that they're doing good work? I mean, it's not that we're trying to devalue their work at all, that's not what this is about. And I, why does it have to be that way?
Well, maybe that's something Megan and I can talk about with the community relation thing. Because we do the Friends of Franklin Public Schools, you know, and that's volunteers that come in and help, but what about the teachers themselves and the staff? I mean, there's the Urack breakfast, but... Still thought.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mrs. Schleter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, we're adjourned at 7:35.